A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, thank you all for coming to the September meeting of the Mountain Jewett Borough Council. We always appreciate your involvement, your participation. For all is your community. It's just a second here. As always, we start with the public. Uh, we have a five minute limit, talk about whatever you want. So, who wants to go first and have something to say? Or does anyone?
I have nothing.
You've got something to say, give it to her.
No, I'm not going to.
Okay, I wanna thank the borough employees for coming up and cleaning that drain out. They did a good job. Putting the gravel in where it washed out. And after that one hard rainstorm, I went over, they made a trap for the sand. I went over and had to shovel that out so it didn't get down in the drain. But, was Aqua around at all?
Aqua's been informed about the road. And they said that they would get to it as soon as they could.
Okay.
I've spoke to them.
Here he goes. We can say the pledge of allegiance.
I didn't, um, talk, I mean, charge a dollar for a relay, right?
For every minute. Oh boy, he owes us a dollar.
It's tagged on to the fifteen grand already owed.
Alright, anything else for that?
Yeah, you go ahead and say the pledge.
Pledge.
Thing about the park, off the laptop.
Yep.
What are they doing around the edges, putting the derby in?
Um, we're talking about that right now, we're gonna be needing to do some shoulder work. So, we're working on, um, looking at the best way we might take it on ourselves and just do it. If, uh, turns out to be that isn't our best solution, then we'll be looking to, to reach out. But, we're gonna start to see if we can just get our guys up there with our equipment and get the shoulders taken care of.
I hate seeing taxpayers' money go to something like that when there's so much work and then need down on the streets and the drains and stuff.
No, I understand, and, and I can assure you, we're looking into all of those. We got grant requests out looking for street work, sidewalk issues down here. The, I mean, we're working on all of it, but, um, a lot of that, that was, uh, money that had to go to recreation, parks and recreation in some capacity. So, um, that was something that had been requested for quite a while from the public to see if we could pay that. And it was, it was a use it or lose it type of situation, and they limited how we could use it. So, we didn't wanna do nothing with it. So...
There's a big drainage problem up there, too.
Yep, and, um...
That should've been taken care of before we did the work on the paving. I feel.
Well, I appreciate the comment, um, and certainly we're aware of that as well, looking at what options we have there. Um, and I know there's a lot of different factors involved, but that drainage issue up there, it's something that's been going on. As long as I've been on this board, we've been talking about that situation. There's a lot of history to that. Is that all you had today?
Yeah, for now.
Okay. Um, you guys? Alright, with that, we will close public comment. And, um, I did not get a report from the mayor, did, did you get any of ours?
No.
Alright, so we'll jump right into the maintenance reports.
I think the mayor sent them, sent something to us in email.
It, it may be, I haven't checked.
I looked at, like, she wrote a bunch of stuff.
I didn't see anything on mine.
I'll take a look.
I didn't get anything.
Oh, you know what, she sure did.
She just sent it.
Oh, just sent it, oh, okay.
Uh, she has a birthday in the family, so she's busy. Happy birthday to Tom, and I'll read her updates real quick. "I've noticed a lot more police activity in town these past few weeks, and I think it's great. I hope it will continue to address and break down the speeding problem. I am thinking it's probably time to circle back and set up another meeting with the state police. If anyone is interested in attending something like this, please let me know, and I will get it set up." "Number two, I think, given the recent incident with the building on Main Street that was damaged in the accident, uh, we should definitely be considering the importance of cameras. I know we are going to be putting one at the borough building, but I wonder if one closer towards Main Street would be helpful." "Three, Brett and I talked about doing a sewer tour to check out the sewer pond for those of us who might have questions as we continue to have folks coming to meetings and asking sewer-related questions. Perhaps if others are interested, we could do that in the next week or so." "And four, a big thank you to the borough for allowing the Swedish Festival Committee and others to use the building for other Swedish festivals. The festival was a huge success again this year, thanks to many, many helping hands. Thank you to all involved, and thank you to our Borough Council for the support of the Beer Garden, which helped raise funds for the Mountain Jewett Swedish Association." And so, those are her points. Uh, some of that could be up for discussion if anybody wants to.
I think it would be a good idea to get very involved with the state police.
I, I don't disagree, I'm not sure how one would do that, but...
Yeah, I don't know how we would, how...
But, had setting, uh, we can talk to Brianna if she wants to set up another meeting with them. Um, I know we talked about cameras, not to shift away from that, but, um, we should definitely see about another meeting, for sure. Um, we've talked about cameras in the past, about, but I don't, I don't know, like, where do you, how do we would do that, like?
Well, I mean...
Obviously, for our own properties would make the most sense.
Right.
And granted, we do own a property right here. But, that's, that's basically what I would think, is if we were gonna do cameras, it would just be like ours. Our property, so maybe parks and, and that, but where's that in the budget? And, you know?
I don't think that would be, I mean, I have degrees yet. If it's gonna be cameras, the businesses, for the businesses, they need to put their own cameras in.
Correct.
Like, you know, not picking on the laundromat and the free store and... That should be our responsibility.
Right.
I don't think the borough has, should fork the money out for that, you know?
Yeah, and then if our cameras happen to pick up things outside of, if we get cameras for our properties, then maybe encourage business owners, hey, it's to everybody's benefit...
Right.
To, to have this network in case something happens in these areas like this, so there's evidence, but...
Regarding the incident that happened up there...
Yep.
I know a lot of people get real negative about the borough workers, where they aren't doing enough, um, and Brett, and other citizens. They all came together, it didn't matter whether they were mad with each other, or had arguments or disagreements. They didn't have time to fight.
Right.
They were busy taking care of what was going right on right there. So, I think they need to be commended, all the people that just went and took care of it.
Well, thank you. Um, Brett, did you have anything additional or any about her talk about a sewer pond tour?
Well, yeah, if people are interested, wanna go down and see what we got going on.
Cause I mean, I, personally, I've never been down there, so it would be interesting.
Let me know. I'm very interested.
Just to even see it.
Oh, yeah, I mean, I've got some medical appointments coming up that I'm gonna take my dad to, but, uh, get some dates together and times. Anytime during the day works for me, but if it's an evening, it don't matter, we still got decent weather, so...
You'd keep it where you go on the quorum, where it's going.
Right, right, I can take the, the two people down at a time and go it, or...
Okay.
Whatever you want.
Sounds good.
If it's an informational meeting, I don't think the quorum...
I think not.
Yeah, if you put that many people together.
You're not making any decisions.
Well, even, even meetings, you have work sessions have to be advertised, you know, when you have all the council together, so...
I know we all show up to...
Now, now, Jason.
PSAB.
If we were gonna go ahead and do, uh, you were telling, you talked about in our sewer committee meeting, a possible using our September meeting.
Work session.
If we're gonna use our work session, already advertised, hey, we're leaving here, we're going down there.
I was actually, cause we're, we, Barb and I talked a little bit about using that work session, especially ahead of, um, meeting with Aqua. Because it would give an opportunity for the council to then, what questions do we have? Cause Aqua, we can't, we can't bring us all to meet Aqua, but the committee will meet with Aqua. But, everybody can say, I wanna know about this, and so we could talk questions, and, and I think that's a great idea. Go down there, see what the situation is. Um, so, yeah, that's, that's a perfect time to do it.
We'll do a German meeting here, and we're gonna carry on down there, we'll be there for extra, cause there's not a whole lot to see, you know?
Right, right.
At least, you guys could see it, and where's that?
Barb, remind me, when is that scheduled, do you have that by chance?
Third Sunday in September.
Okay. Um, but, yeah, we do intend to use that for that, so that's a, that's a good suggestion.
What would be the fifteenth?
Um, be two weeks from...
Might be fifteenth.
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 Fifteenth, yeah. Right before Mexican Independence Day. Okay. Does anyone have any comments or questions or thoughts or concerns about that marriage report? Cause all the entertaining motion to accept it. Five motions to accept it. Second?
Second.
Second from Brett, all those in favor? Any opposed? Alright. Thank you, Robin, for playing out, she had sent that in. And, uh, now we'll look at the maintenance report.
Motion, do yourself.
Alright, have a motion to accept the maintenance report on the floor. Any questions, concerns, or seconds?
All second.
Robin, second.
Who motioned it?
Tom did. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I take silence to mean no. Uh, sewer maintenance report. Alright, I guess this is a good place to bring this up, this additional PV paving, that's what this is for, right, the Fuller?
Yeah.
Um, we had talked about, when PV paving came up for the park, we were gonna have them go down to Fuller Street, uh, while they were mobilized up here to deal with that. Uh, we have that bill. Um, we did approve them doing it, but I wanted to bring the bill to the council, cause it's three thousand eight hundred seventy-seven dollars. Um, the sewer's paying it from their accounts. Um, but I just wanted to make sure everyone was on the same page that we're paying this bill. And if anyone has any concerns or issues or questions, now is the time. So, it, we'd still just, how long do we wait for him to, like, the customer who's not sure what route to take on the spring situation?
No, that's why I left, to go down and have a spot to chat. And, uh, I advised him to put what he would, his alternative in writing. We, uh, differed quite a bit on it. You know, put his request in writing, and then we can review it. I'll have the attorney review it, we'll go from there.
Perfect, but he's gonna do that soon, then?
Yeah.
Alright, good. Any other questions or concerns? For maintenance report for the sewer?
Motion.
Brett makes a motion to accept sewer maintenance report. Robin, second.
Second.
Second from Tom, all those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. Take a look at the Borough Manager's Report. Barb, any?
Okay, um, I contacted Aqua about the access road going up to the tanks, um, they'll be addressing it shortly. Um, the house numbering signs, um, I've completed all of them except for the business district. And the fire department is working to get them all installed. All billing and collections for the sewer have been completed, everything's going well. Um, there is a more grant out, um, that will help with a cost of a level two energy audit and design for upgrading the borough building to become more energy efficient. Um, there's also more loan that you can access afterwards, um, which cannot be accessed after the grant determines what upgrades are needed. This loan program's up to fifteen years and get you grant funds to bring interest down to zero percent. This grant fund is only for municipal buildings. Um, they saw that there aren't any grants open to help the municipalities with their own buildings. So, this one is open. Um, you would get, they would pay for the level two, um, uh, audit and a design. And then you can buy down, like, you can say it's four thousand dollars to buy down to zero percent or whatever. That you can request that for a zero percent on a loan. The loans can go up to fifteen years. I know you guys were talking about possibly air conditioning, insulating things, making things tighter. Um, so, is this something you guys would like me to apply for, look into?
Is there a cost for it, for applying?
No, not that one.
Okay. I mean, this is exactly what has been on the thing for a while, is to at least get started with...
Well, um, you have to, like, I talked to, Tracy Frampton was in, I asked if their engineering group did this kinda stuff, cause they could give us a quote, cause you have to have a quote from an engineering group that does, like, the energy audits and all that.
Yeah.
You know, to put in with your application. Um, and he said he would get back to me on it, um, so... If this is something you guys, they don't. See, well, maybe E and M.
Yeah, try and see, they were gonna continue to look in to see if there's anybody else that does, but maybe even talk to the people from the webinar and see if they have an outlet for a level two.
Okay.
Level two, there's not a whole lot of them available.
Okay. Well, I noticed they, like, they sent you to a website, and almost all of them are, like, down towards Philadelphia, New Jersey, that kinda way.
Yeah.
But, there was some that were, um, Allentown, um, some down around Pittsburgh. So, maybe I'll have to look out for that, but if you guys are interested in, I'll work on doing that. If you're not, then that's fine, I just thought I'd let you know it's there.
Well, my thought, after we talked about it, was to, to the five-year plan on the borough building, that fits in. My thoughts are, instead of getting prices like a level two evaluation, if we can get it...
Right.
Do it. And then you have the funding for the program as well, built into that, at a low interest.
So, go ahead and try to get something out of it.
That's my, my stance, I know, yeah. I think it's worth pursuing, for sure.
Okay, um, then the local share account statewide grant opens on September first, and it closes November thirtieth. Um, we applied for the Ventrac tractor, um, two years ago. Uh, thought maybe we could try to get it again. Um, that would help us with, um, taking care of the sidewalks, brush mowing, trimming attachments. Um, there is a hundred dollar fee, and you'll have to pass a resolution if you guys are interested. If not, that's fine, too. They haven't awarded the one from last year yet. Um, I did put in for Anderson Street last year.
Yeah.
That has, none of them have been awarded, in fact, um... I was told, Tracy told me they wouldn't be awarding those until this other one closes, so...
Until this closes?
Yeah, so, not the end of November.
Okay. Well, those of you in, in streets and, what is your take on it?
A hundred dollars.
Yeah.
I'm ready to shop.
Yeah, I'd say the... Go for it.
It seems like a good thing we did it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Do I need motions on either one of those, do you think?
Um, well, the first one, there's no money involved. We could do it just to have it on the record. Somebody will make a motion for her to be, do both of them at once?
I'd make that motion.
Alright, can I get a second on that? Brett makes a motion, Brett seconds for Barb to apply to both of those grants. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, it's clear. Alright, any questions about it? Otherwise, I'll take a motion to accept the manager, Borough Manager's Report.
Motion.
Second.
Alright, Brett makes a motion, Brett seconds, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries, which moves us into the minutes. We don't usually motion anything.
No, you accept them.
But, if we're happy with it, we can also take, start taking a look at the treasures report and payment of bills.
Okay.
For, let's do it right, for the borough.
Oh, I did have one, um, I got a call from, uh, our C and B. Wanted to know if you guys wanted to do anything with money that's sitting in the money market. Once again, um... Did you guys wanna move it yet, or just leave it where it is, or? We're still getting, like, five point one percent interest with it in the money market.
If it makes any sense to move it, if it's making a lot of money.
Okay.
I'd say leave it.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve the treasures report and payment of bills.
My second.
Brett makes a motion. Robin seconds to accept the payment of bills and treasures report for the borough, all those in favor? Any opposed? That motion carries. Shift over to looking at the sewer treasures report and payment of bills.
I did transfer a hundred thousand dollars out of the checking into the, um, pluggate account. Um, after we closed the, uh, CD over at C and B, and the extra checking, money in the checking. I figured that way it would start end, you know, getting five percent interest or whatever.
Yeah. Anything else on, on here, but? Or anybody have any impressions about anything they're seeing?
So, where, where are we at with the cover sister, I guess we, the sister city, are we? I guess I'll have to wait till Brianna and Chuck are here.
Yeah.
We are, we're still on sewer, that was kinda...
Oh, on sewer, sorry.
We're on sewer. Sewer treasures report, I was like, sister city.
Sorry.
I mean, if they wanna help pay our bills, that's fine.
Sorry, guys.
I will take a motion to accept the treasures report. Payment of bills for the sewer.
I'll make the motion.
Brett makes that motion, who wants a second?
I'm not sure if I should.
Tom seconds for the sewer treasures report, payment of bills, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Alright, um, Sister City's further down, so we can talk about how we really have anything to talk about when we get there. In the meantime, we'll shift to committee reports and streets and buildings.
Not all, I mean, I discussed some, some of the stuff already, as far as... As far as up the park, as far as that along the edge to burn that, like, well, I use our, have the guys just use our own stuff that we have up there, some millings and stuff to burn that out.
Really, really enough?
I don't know what you're talking about, Sid.
I don't know if we have enough, we're definitely gonna have to get a roller from somewhere, and they're gonna have to put it out pretty wide to make it...
I haven't been up there, okay.
I mean, it's, some of the areas are, you know, high, so you're gonna have to pull it out pretty wide. But, we're definitely gonna need some sort of compaction to stick it in.
Which is cheaper, that or dirt?
Dirt is probably more expensive, they're actually top sort of, yeah.
So, do we have a, a resource to get more if we don't have enough?
Millings, you'd have to buy them, uh, I told Rick, go down to the parking bars, see what kinda stone he's making down there, see if there's anything that wouldn't be too muddy, that we can get up there. But, uh, we're definitely gonna need enough to finish it, uh, it'd probably be tripped, because we only have one dump truck now. They're gonna be using that to haul the stuff around, dump it, probably behoove you just to have it put up there. Um, and then you put the millings in, the bigger stuff, you don't have anything, crunch it in, you're just gonna be hitting with lawn mowers. You know what I mean? So, I had them, uh, get ahold of a couple of people, see, and I'm gonna talk to Highland Township, see if they have a wider box or anything, one of those chip boxes that they use. If we could use something like that, they have, one of the other townships, they have something coming with a bigger dump truck, and just pour it out to the side where it's more uniformly, just a little rake in and roll it in. I know Keating is offering to do a little horse trading with us. Um, I'm sure Highland would if we, they hadn't had the equipment to help us.
Okay. So, we'll let you keep working on figuring out.
I just started saying I wasn't, I didn't catch that they didn't have the, uh, shoulder backup added in. I was actually kinda surprised that they didn't, but, I missed it, so...
Alright, anything else for that committee?
No.
Alright, finance and insurance, um, I know Chris isn't here, do you, do you know if there's any updates?
Um, just I turned that, our damage into our insurance company, so they can go after the gentleman's who wrapped insurance company.
Okay.
So, uh, that has been taken care of.
Good, good, uh, personnel?
Chuck and I.
Yeah, but, but it was before the meeting, Chuck's, Chuck did call in, um, he's unable to be here for personal reasons, he's excused. Um, he said he touched base with all of the employees, and that everything is good, and that everybody's doing well, so... Nothing to report on that, Brett. Uh, community development planning parks, who?
No.
Okay.
I think we did enough with the park, we gotta try and round it in.
Yep. Alright, fire department, um, they did start putting in the numbers, and there was a mishap and miscommunication, and um, I will be taking the bill for that to the fire department, I believe they should pay it, so that would be my proposal. Um, for those who don't know, they did hit a gas line with one of the numbers, um, that they were putting in.
Whoops.
And it has been taken care of, and I know Brett has been in communication since then about the PA one calls, which it was just a matter of, they waited too long after the last batch of calls to just, and they just started to do it, and the grass grows and it gets mowed, and... So, all of that is being straightened out, they put the whole thing on pause, the fix was issued, I know Brett, you have touched base with them.
Um, the next section is, they're good till the twelfth, and I'll do the next batch when they tell me they, they need to get it done. It's, uh, three business days from the time I call till they can start, and then they have a little over two weeks for which to get the work done.
Yeah, and we'll be regrouping on Thursday at the fire department about this, about the mishap and the bad start, and make sure that everything stays smooth from this point on, stay in communication with, with you as needed, and let's, let's not have this problem again. And get it done. Um, so, other than that, uh, no issues or nothing else really going on up there. Um, library, I don't know, anybody here make it to a library meeting?
They have one in August.
Okay.
We have one in late July, and then we skipped August, and the other, the next one is next Wednesday.
But, it's just chug along, nothing major?
Nothing major.
Okay. Uh, code enforcement, has that committee had a chance to meet lately or talked or anything?
Oh, yeah, no.
Okay, any, any big things that would need to be brought here?
No, just little.
Okay. Um, sewer, um, before we get into much more, I'm gonna talk about the other check I have up here. Actually, I'm gonna probably make Brett and Barb talk about this, cause they know a lot more about it than I do. And I wanted to bring it to the body again, um, and, and Barb was on board, kind of her suggestion, too. Uh, because it is an eleven thousand four hundred forty dollar check, um, for, uh, what is it? Preventative maintenance and does it have to be...
Like an insurance type thing?
Yes, it is that. So, um, it is a, it's a, not a subs, it's not a subscription, I don't know what you would call it, like a contract.
We, uh...
It's a maintenance, so, it's a yearly, an annual maintenance agreement for the solar aerators.
Yeah, so...
Um, they take care of, if a, if a solar panel breaks or whatever, they come and repair, or replace it, doesn't cost us. Um, batteries, they'll come and replace those, it costs them, not us. So, basically, I know the one time they had lightning hit one of them, and it was like a nineteen thousand dollar damage, and our maintenance treatment, they took care of everything, and it costs us absolutely nothing.
It was a three-year agreement?
And, yeah, when, when it came up, we made an agreement for three years, we went into it, and that gave you a cheaper yearly fee.
Is this year, is this year four, would this re-up it, or is this...
No, that's the second, is it the second year?
Third year.
Third year, maybe.
Okay.
That's the only iteration we have of the funds right now, we don't have anything else, we have the, the new aerators we got from a grant, but that's gonna be a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar electrical upgrade to get those to work, because the wrong size motors were ordered, so...
Right.
Basically, we gotta have it, and we've already agreed to be a three-year contract.
The sewer committee agreed to, and that, well, the sewer authority agrees to this, and then the sewer committee recommends to just continue with this. Um, but it, because it was such a long-term, I didn't want to be sticker shock for anybody, so I thought I wanted to bring a little bit of understanding to the body, the, the council, about what this expense was and why it's valuable.
We've had that program ever since we've had the solar fees, I don't think we've got a year without it.
Yeah, and it seems like...
I think they went a couple of years.
Couple of years.
Yeah, but it's definitely, it seems like it's worth having.
Yes.
And they guarantee all the work, right?
We have the motion, or is it...
Um, I mean, we already, the sewer already agreed to this, so it's just being paid?
Huh?
It'll be in the bills.
It'll probably be on the next bill.
It'll be in the next one. I don't have it on, cause it just came in.
Yeah, we're just paying it now, but, just cause it was such a big number, I would've thought a little bit of background would be good. Um, is there anything else sewer-relevant, um, since our last meeting?
We talked about, of course, we kinda did talk about, we're gonna have that meeting for...
Yes, uh, we're gonna do our work session, um, to discuss... Yes, uh, we're gonna do our work session, um, to discuss more in depth, because sewer has come to take up a lot of this meeting. And and we we really can't have that, um, and that's what work sessions are for, and and things like that, so this, we're gonna use our next work session to invite the entire council to come join us. And we're gonna just dig into sewer with all the questions, anything that's, because we took it over, and we should really regroup and sit down and talk about. How we're going to manage it going forward, with or without a sale, like, because regardless, we have to keep managing it, as we've said. And so, um, anybody who has any questions about how that's doing, how that's going, what the sewer committee is doing, what their role is, how it all connects, that's the place we're gonna dig into that.
What's the date on that meeting?
Fifteenth.
Fifteenth?
Four o'clock.
Yeah.
Four o'clock.
Down there?
Well, it'll be here, and then we talked about, yeah, temp, like, adjourning or whatever, and then heading down to check out. Because that one is advertised, so then we could take everybody who wants to go.
The citizens from town can come?
I don't know.
Work sessions are open.
But can they go down to the plant?
That's what I mean.
Unless they don't fall in.
Well, I can't imagine it being a big group, there's only been like.
Right, but, okay, then, that's where that stands, um. The only other thing that I've had questions about, and we might as well bring it up here, is, um, I know people are wanting to know what's going on with cell towers, I don't know if we have great news, but, or any news, but we might as well.
There is.
There you go.
You can ask about that part, anything else.
That's what I mean. Okay, and we don't know anything?
Hector's in, and that's it.
They're working on it, that's all we know. All right, anything else sewer that needs to be addressed tonight? So that wraps that up, um, we should, the whole business, the five year plan, we kinda talked about, getting that ball rolling. Sister City, Robin, uh, people who are spearheading that are not here, so we'll.
I can let you know that they are, they did sign up for their, um, we are a member.
Okay.
And they did sign up for that, so that's as far as I know that they went.
That doesn't give us a city yet, though, does it, it's just, we're just.
No, I believe the way that she was explaining it to me is, once you sign up, then you, they like throw you in as a city that somebody might wanna grab. Cause they give you a list of cities that like are available, that you might be interested in, but.
Okay. Okay. Well, there's that. Um, we have the horse and buggy hitching post topic, which just keeps floating around, so.
Okay, let's stop there. Um, I know Chuck suggested it. Who's gonna be putting in the hitching post?
Would it not be us? I don't know. It's new territory for me, so I'm.
I don't think it should be us.
No, it shouldn't.
And I don't think we should supply any of the wood, they've got a lumberyard up there, that they can do it, I didn't say it.
I know. Um, I mean.
They should supply it, and have they come to us and said, we would like a hitching post, I know it's a, a jester, a kind jester. But at the same time, have they actually came, and how much money do they really spend in our city?
Well.
I mean, it's small, but.
I hear you, um, I would say that the, the last word that I got was that the fire department was interested in.
Right.
Being the location, so it could be that the fire department could be involved in installation, work with them, and if that's something the fire department wants to do. For them, that's a fire department issue, it's in their parking lots, not in our streets.
Right.
Um, like I, that's just something they can do.
Yeah, I think it's good to.
It's neighborly.
You know, give them a spot, but to your point, they've got a sommel, and, you know, if they would like it in there, you know. We'll give you a spot to put it in, and clean up after yourselves.
I just think the four guys have enough to do. People keep saying that they don't, but they do.
Yeah.
I'm 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 all for them having a place to hitch out, but if the borough's gonna go up there and shovel manure every day.
No, and and if it's gonna be there, and then the fire department has said that they're okay with that, I'll talk about it Thursday.
That's that's their baby.
That becomes, it's a private property issue, it's their property, and we'll just say, hey, thanks for, you know, that.
Barb, is there any way, as far as talk to our solicitor, as far as putting that into the, what's the ordinance we have for as far as picking up? If you ever had a dog litter nuisance.
That would be in our nuisance ordinance. I haven't talked to the solicitor at all about it.
I just, cause I think they should have to clean up their own.
Well, most definitely, I thought that Chuck was gonna.
Any animal.
Right, that's what I mean, that's.
Our dogs, horses, you know.
I don't know how it reads, and then why later, if it, if it reads your animals or whatever, then that would probably cover a bit.
Yeah, but that's fair, I I agree with that, um, if, that should be like, in the ordinance, if that's gonna be something that they're parking here in town. And we let, make people pick up after their dog, you should pick up after your horse.
You're running through, they make bastards for that stuff.
Right, exactly, there's ways to.
I personally think they should come here and find out what we're expecting from them. And they can let us know, and I would, this has nothing to do with horse and buggy, but are there any ways we can get little. Rom cans, whatever, one or two on Main Street for people who are walking their dogs and picking up, that they can drop it in there instead of throwing it in the bushes, or?
I would say that that, that we could bring and put it on for next month's new business, and we could talk about trash receptacles in town.
Okay.
Because I've heard, um, from some people in the public, and we, I know we brought it up a few years ago about maybe having one in Heritage Park, but then there's the issue of who cleans them up. So it is a worthy discussion to have, because the public has expressed their interest, we're going to have an amphitheater that has bathrooms involved, so trash is gonna become.
Right.
A part of our process, um, so, but I, but I think it would need to be a line, I'd have added to the next.
Aren't there several uptown?
We have one, I thought, well, we have.
There's one by the.
The post office has one. Senior Center one is gone.
And there was one down by the laundromat.
I think it's just the post office that's.
In front of the cap baseball.
Cause I knew there was like four of them, they used to take it, maybe they got, I know the one got taken out by the post office.
The senior center one was falling apart a few years ago, cause it used to sit but next to my house, and I looked at it, and then it just disappeared, so they got rid of it. But yeah, we'll look at how, where we have them, and what we think is the best approach, so, it's worth having the conversation, I I think. There's nothing else listed here for, for new business, anybody have anything more on horse and buggy hitching posts? All right, then that shifts us to public response, if the public has anything to respond to what we talked about specifically in this meeting, this is your time to do so. If not, I will call for a motion to adjourn, which Tom has already made.
Second.
Brett seconds, all those in favor?